Go any further in the meeting and I read the Open Public Meetings Act. I need a motion to appoint Dr. McLaughlin as Acting Board Secretary for the evening. So, we move to second. This is your call. And this is Paluzak. All those in favor? How it be it? Or Board Secretary. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of the bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the date, town, and place of said meetings to be published in the Daily Record, the Star Ledger, and across the in all schools in the district, in the municipal building of the township, and the township library. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purposes stated in the public notice? All documentation and materials considered by the Board of Education as part of this agenda are available for public review and comment. Members of the public are invited to come to the Board of Education Building off Green Pond Road during the regular business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, if they wish to inspect any of the referenced items. Before we go any further, I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. McLaughlin as superintendent and not as Board Secretary.
We have a presentation tonight by two of our students who've got to do an update on the Stat of the League program. They've spoken before the board before, so Caitlin and Tiana would come forward. Appreciate that so much.
I'm going to make you look at Lois and Bart pulls out and you'll be like, you're bad on white.
Well, hi. Have you noticed that our world has become a very unsafe place with increased school shootings and amounts of deaths? Things needed to be changed. We are only 21 weeks into 2018, and there have already been 23 school shootings where someone was hurt or killed. That averages out to more than one shooting a week from CNN.com. As students, we want to be able to protect ourselves and the people around us. That's when we had the idea to bring turnips into our school district. Now, if a school shooting were to ever occur in our district, the turnips would save many lives. For those who don't know what turnips are, they are a device to stop the blood flowing from an artery or vein that could potentially save someone's life. Our original goal was to put 20 turnips into each elementary school and 40 into the middle school. In order to do this, we could give the need to raise at least $3,444 of funding. As of today, $1,500 in donations have already been collected. Special thanks to all the school principals, Oakland Video, and TAs, along with local police and fire departments for the funding assistance towards the project. Based on the donations already collected, we are providing each school with three mini kits to start along with some extra supplies. Each mini kit contains two turnips, gauze, and gloves. We have a complete open sale of at least 2,000 units. After the additional donations are received, we will be able to supply the schools with the ideal amount of kits in fully regional. We are hoping to have it all in place before the end of 2018. Dr. Rosenberg is currently working up with the school nurses to schedule training on how to properly put on turnips and tack boots. We intend to continue our efforts in assisting training. We would like to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to complete our work and share their success with the community. Special thanks to Terrible News Act, Nancy Helbord, Mr. Adams, and Dr. Rosenberg for the individual guidance throughout the past year. Thank you all for your help and support. We could not have completed this without you. Can a representative from each school please come up to us and give their comments?
Could I ask, we could perhaps have one representative, if we have a lot of staff members in the audience, if one from each of our schools come up and take a kit? From the middle school?
I see KDM. I know KDM is here.
From KDM. From Dwyer. From O'Brien. Stony Brook. Is everybody?
Birchwood, is there anyone here from Birchwood? If not, we will make a special delivery. So you know what? If you want to give us Birchwood.
We can take care of it. That's our word.
You can? Yeah. Certainly on behalf of the board, when you first presented this to us, we were all behind you, we were encouraging you, and you did a great job to make just about halfway there. It's just incredible in that short amount of time. We also promised that that time, that if we could, as we went forward, once we knew how much more money you needed, when it came to budget time, we perhaps could help on our end for next year's budget. So please keep us informed. We're starting to prepare Budget Now in October. We vote on the budget finally in April, so we have time. But please keep us in mind, we can do anything we can to help fund. We can't give you the money as part of the donation, but we could perhaps fill a missing piece on our end in terms of supplies. But we encourage you to keep going, and thank you so much. And on behalf of the staff, I'm sure they're grateful as well. So once again, thank you so much.
We also have another special presentation tonight. In a moment, we'll come forward to present some certificates to those who could attend tonight from our custodial and maintenance staff. I'm sure that everyone who works within any one of our school buildings or facilities appreciates the amount of work that goes into maintaining these facilities in a way that's conducive to learning, that's a great place to come to work. It takes a lot to keep the amount of buildings that we have in the shape that they are in. And they really, the staff who will be recognized tonight, and those who were not able to attend, will also receive certificates, many of whom are working right now and could not be with us. But we really want to extend our appreciation. There are hot summer days that we come through, people are lifting heavy materials. There were folks here on Saturdays and Sundays, we had a project, as you might know, that was going on in Stony Brook. And so there were seven-day-a-week rotations happening this summer. And this is just a small measure, a token, to be able to say that we recognize the work that you did, that we appreciate the work that you did, that we're fortunate to have you as part of our team, and that we never take you for granted. So we'll be calling you up in just a moment by name, and we'd like you to come forward and get a certificate on behalf of the board and the administration in appreciation of your efforts. Ms. Almarie, although I know you're leaving us, you're here tonight, this is your staff, so I think you should come join us up here. Anthony Burrows. Jesus Castano. Anthony Ferrantino. Alvaro Gomez. Sean Heath. Carlos Hoya. Ken Volkan. Gustavo Morales. Luis Munoz. George Merton. Carol Tito. Joseph Runions. Michael Salvatore. Orlando Sepulveda. Kathy D. So you mean Franklin? You could both join us up here for a picture?
Thank you all for coming, and we certainly appreciate everything you've done on behalf of the board. Our buildings are always immaculate, and it's because of everything you do. So we are completely indebted to you for all your hard work. Before we open it to public discussion, I do have to read something into the minutes, and I'll give it to our Acting Board Secretary. Yesterday, I received a letter from Ro Chabala, dated September 25th, and it says, "Please accept this letter as my resignation effective today from the Board of Education. Due to travel for work, I will no longer be able to meet my required duties of a Board of Education member. I want to thank the entire board, administration, and all staff members for all the hard work and commitment to ensure that our children get the best possible education. It has been my pleasure serving this board, district, and community. Sincerely, Rosemary Chabala." So before we accept with regret the resignation, I'd like to let you know what happened at this point. By statute, a board has 65 days to fill a vacancy once it becomes effective. 65 days from yesterday brings us, I believe, to November 29th. Now, according to statute, if the vacancy happens before the third Monday of July, then the vacancy is filled until the upcoming election, and that person would have to then run for a seat on the board. If the vacancy happens after the third Monday in July, then the person filling that seat would normally fill that seat until a year from then, until election. So actually, a few months and then another year till that would take effect. But in the case of this situation, Ro's seat was actually up for election this time, so it does change things a bit. At this time, the board has not decided for sure exactly what we're going to do pending the outcome of the election, because the election happens well before the November 29th date. So stay tuned. But at this time, we do now have a board of six, and we'll continue this way until future notice. So with that, with regret, may I have a motion to accept Ro's resignation? Rachel?
Second.
Second. Nancy Charak, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Charak?
Yes.
Ms. Helbord?
Yes.
Ms. Paluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Messick?
Yes.
Ms. Sulli?
Yes.
So the motion passes, and we honored Ro. We were expecting this would happen. We did honor Ro publicly at the previous board meeting, so we totally appreciate all her years, the six years that she gave to this community. So with that, I'd like to now move to public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals to take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address, and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. While comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. So with that, may I have a motion, please, to open to the public? Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Paluzak? Okay, so it's now open to the public. Does anybody wish to address the public?
Hello. Donna Zerka, RTA Co-President.
Tara Van Orient, RTA Vice President.
We're here tonight just to make you aware of some of the pride events that we have coming up with the community. A representative from RTA has been attending all of the back-to-school nights to hand out these flyers to parents. And the first one that we have coming up is actually this Sunday. It's the Wharton 5K Color Run. And in addition to sponsoring the event through Morris County Education Association, we have several RTA members that are running in the race. So it happens at the elementary school in Wharton. The second thing is our humongous, pretty successful Pumpkin Fest. It's our third annual event this year is going to be at Copola Cafeteria again. We put out the event right invite, I think, like Saturday, and it was filled up with 180 people by Sunday. So it's, it will be very successful again. And there's other things on here, more board candidates, and other things that we sponsor through the grants that we get through Morris County Education Association. So we just wanted to make you guys aware and to formally invite you to the Pumpkin Fest on October 16th.
Thank you. Do we have to bring our own knives, or are we? Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Larissa Smith. I live at 124 Mountain Road in Rockaway. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing the public to be able to view the board meetings live. I know as uncomfortable as it may make everyone, including myself, feel, you know, we really appreciate having that opportunity so everyone can experience what's going on here. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, may I have a motion to close to the public? So, Mrs. Brooks? Second. Mrs. Charak? Show of hands. Okay, great. Communications? I don't know if you know if there's been any additional communications?
No additional.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2018. Now have a motion, please. Mrs. Charak?
Second.
Mrs. Paluzak? Board discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Charak?
Yes.
Ms. Helbord?
Yes.
Ms. Paluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezak?
Yes.
Ms. Sulli?
Yes.
Moving on to the vice superintendent's report.
Good evening. The month of September has witnessed a very positive opening of school. The majority of our back-to-school nights have taken place, and the response of our parents has truly been significant, marked by an overwhelming presence and a truly enthusiastic support for the work of teaching and learning. In a similar way, our teachers have responded to the invitation extended a convocation to engage in a focused review of our district's instructional practices and lend their leadership towards continual improvement of our efforts on behalf of students. Dr. Tanamiyan will reference the conversations among educators that have occurred in all of our schools during the month of September, and additionally, a significant amount of our teachers have set forward to engage in our two district think tanks around the issues of literacy and character education. Looking ahead to the month of October, Copola Middle School and the Rockaway Township Schools will take a large step forward with the implementation of one-to-one Chromebook distribution for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Empowering our students with this technology tool that travels between home and school allows our students to engage in learning at a new level, develop true 21st-century skills, and put into practice true digital citizenship. Recently, our district was happy to unveil a first-time Facebook presence. In the short time since its inception, nearly 600 individuals have chosen to follow the district page. And just as a point of interest, we posted a warning message about Blue Whale application, and as of today, from that one announcement, it had been shared 75,000 times flowing from our district page. So really a significant message on how our community is responding to that communication. Taken together with live streaming of board meetings, this was the second major endeavor in the young school year, aimed to increase our connection with the community, open channels of communication, and create new and lasting partnerships. Plans to expand outreach even further include an Instagram presence, a YouTube channel, and a refreshed website during the 2018-2019 school year. I'd like to thank the members of our school community who attended the first of our parent and community forums last evening at KDM. Last night was the first of six planned forums to engage in dialogue with all interested stakeholders, soliciting concerns and ideas that will serve to progressively advance our effectiveness and continuously meet the needs of our students. So I'll be posting a summary of our discussion. We had, I think, we had a great dialogue last night. We had about 28 people attend, and we spent a couple of hours just talking about really good things that I think will help to move our district, continue to move our district forward. This evening, a number of school policies are listed on the agenda for first reading. Our community is invited to review the policies under consideration and provide their input. To assist in this effort, all policies that are under consideration will now be listed separately on our website in a tab entitled Policies Under Consideration. And that will be under the Board tab. We have Policies and Regulations, and then right under it will be Policies Under Consideration. This link will help us to provide greater access to our community, to those policies that we're considering. In some instances, they're policies that we're reauthorizing without change. In some instances, they're policies that have changed, and in some instances, they are brand-new policies. In event of any three of those, we welcome and we encourage our community to provide us with input between that first and second policy reading period. Paper copies have previously been provided, and to help in the transition, we did have them here tonight, but as you could probably see on your way in, that's a lot of paper. So henceforth after tonight, since we have the new place on our website, that's where they will reside, and we won't have paper copies at the meeting. However, if an individual from the community would like paper, they can simply request that from us. Yesterday also marked the first formal meeting of an inaugural class of Rockaway teachers engaged in a partnership with Fairleigh Dickinson University to learn advanced concepts of Wharton-Gillingham reading techniques through a four-part graduate plan of studies that spans an eventual two-year period. We are proud to boast a full enrollment of seven teachers, which is the max that we can have for a class like this. And in this rigorous program, we look forward to celebrating these teachers' success in applying this technique to those students most challenged by the complex process of reading. I'm happy to share that the HVAC project at Stony Brook School is nearly complete, and that the new boiler project at Stony Brook is expected well before the October 15th required date. Plans for a complete new window installation at Stony Brook are on track for the month of January, and continuous attention to the infrastructure of our district's schools will continue, and our commitment to maintain a safe and inviting learning environment for our students will remain a high priority. I will note that the opening of schools across the state was marked by emergency half-days due to heat, but we here at Rockaway Township did not have to endure that because due to the board's vision, we had air-conditioned environments in our schools for those days, and were able to offer uninterrupted learning in those first crucial days of school. One other quick update in regard to infrastructure is that our KDM electronic sign is complete, ready to be delivered, and would have been installed this week, except the weather is not cooperating, so we expect that it will be installed next week. We will update Copland on their electronic sign as soon as we have an update in that regard, and that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. McLaughlin? What did you say Coblen's will be?
I don't have a date yet for Coblen. KDM was the first sign, and once we have that in, then I'll expect an update from the company in regard to Coblen's sign.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to then the Business Administrator's Report.
I do not have a report of the Business Administrator today.
Well, part of your report included that, so we'll take that for that. Okay, we'll move then on to the curriculum report. Dr. Tanamiyan?
Good evening. Thank you. At our last board meeting, I announced that I've been conducting a listening tour and spending one full day in all of our schools. And so from between that meeting and tonight, I would please report, I was able to complete my listening tour as of last Friday, September 21st, at Stony Brook School. I'd like to begin this evening by offering my sincere appreciation and gratitude to the many teachers and staff members who took time out of their busy day to visit with me. I learned much about our schools over the past two weeks and left each school inspired by how committed our teachers and staff are to serving our students and families well. The passion and excitement for the Rockaway Township community and our schools was evident in every building I visited. I also experienced a consistent spirit of teamwork that I found to be very inspiring. Common themes did emerge from the feedback I received across all of our schools, and I would like to highlight those themes here tonight. First, departmental- More recently, the district departmentalized for all subjects, including English Language Arts. Presently, we are not departmentalized in our elementary grades. I intend to take what I learned back to our literacy think tank committee, and as part of the work of that committee, make recommendations about departmentalization in our final report. Another theme that emerged from my visits and conversations was a theme of health instruction. I received a lot of feedback about how we are currently teaching health in our elementary grades. I would like to study this issue further and continue to engage our teachers, administrators, and board members about this work in the coming months. A third theme that emerged related to elementary literacy instruction. I learned a lot about how our teachers are teaching literacy across our elementary schools and grade levels. They are using a variety of resources, and there are some consistent best practices occurring across our schools. The investment in Earlwood over the past few years has provided teachers with a mechanism to assess student reading levels regularly and match them with the appropriate level text for independent reading. Another theme that emerged from my conversations related to academic intervention. In speaking with our academic interventionist teachers, I learned about a variety of resources they use for assessment and instruction. I also learned about how we have provided various forms and levels of training for Project Read in recent years. Another theme related to art. During my tour, I had an opportunity to meet with many of our art teachers. In learning about their experience in the district in recent years, we decided as a collective, it would be best to set up a separate department meeting for a more in-depth conversation about our art programs and how they are currently structured and supported. That meeting occurred yesterday, and my commitment to the art teachers was that and is that, that those meetings will continue throughout the school year. Another theme that emerged from my tour related to character education. I was excited to learn about various programs and rituals our schools are implementing to support character education. Our think tank committee for character education will work to determine how we will empower each school with a process and resources to further develop their individual character education programs. I'm also pleased to report that that committee launched this afternoon. Another theme that emerged from my tour related to professional development. In each school, I made a point to ask teachers about their experience with professional development over the past few years. I often asked them what they liked and what they did find that are helpful. Many of our elementary teachers expressed a desire to experience regular grade group meetings, where they can meet with teachers who teach the same grade at different schools. Teachers also expressed excitement about the idea of receiving more job-invented professional development going forward. Several teachers also noted how much they enjoyed the times when they received professional development from their colleagues. More specifically, they enjoyed when they had an opportunity to experience a new craft or a new content area they were not familiar with. Put simply, they really enjoyed and liked being learners. Another theme that emerged from my tour related to Google. Generally, I received a lot of positive feedback about our move to Google. Teachers also expressed an interest in additional professional development to learn more about Google Classroom and its many resources. To that end, we will be launching a series of lunch and learn voluntary professional development sessions this month in all elementary schools, where teachers will have an opportunity to learn more about implementing Google in their classroom, and in a smaller, more intimate setting. That concludes the themes from my listening tour. I have three other areas I'd like to provide updates around. First, leads. In previous board reports I've shared with the board, conversations we've been having determining whether or not we consider moving from Dare to Leads. I'm pleased to report that we have brought on two new curriculum writers for our KDA5 health curriculum. The writers are currently exploring ways we may be able to integrate Leads curriculum into our fifth-grade health curriculum. At the same time, the writers of the sixth to eighth-grade health curriculum are also reviewing the Leads curriculum to determine if we could add this content to our health curriculum in the middle school. At this time, we will launch, we will not launch, a new Leads program this school year. We will continue with the Dare program in fifth grade, and then based on the results of the curriculum revisions and rewrite in the coming months, we may look in the next school year for a possible limitation of Leads. Second topic relates to the think tanks, and just some quick updates. Both the literacy and, as I already indicated, the character education think tank that launched today, the character education think tank launched today, and I'm pleased to report that tomorrow, the literacy think tank will launch. It is worth noting and celebrating, we had 29 teachers volunteer to serve on the literacy committee, and 11 teachers volunteered to serve on the character committee. So, we very much appreciate and applaud our teachers for coming forward and to join us in both of these, in very important strategic endeavors. And then lastly, a quick update, update related to our gifted and talented curriculum. I'm pleased to report a draft of GNT curriculum rewrite has been submitted for both grades three through five and six to eight to the instructional council for a review. And lastly, I just want to inform the community that all students previously given GNT resurfaces will continue to receive those services this school year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Dr. Tanamiyan?
I do. Gifted and talented, do you expect the instructional council to have looked at it before the next education committee meeting, or will it be longer than that?
I do. Because I have written that ahead of time, I didn't share. They looked at it today and approved it today. So, you're, we will be able to deliver it about next week.
Great. I do have a question about the lunch and lunch from the Google. How will that be facilitated?
We've identified our Google-certified tech coach who is stationed at COBland, but has autonomy to move throughout the district over the course of the day. We've established five dates already and distributed them to the schools for that tech person to go and spend all three lunches at that school and be housed in the computer lab. And so, our hope is in this more intimate setting, over the course of the hour, our teachers, our elementary teachers in particular, will see a very highly personalized and differentiated PD focused on Google.
So, those five dates will be one of each of the elementary schools.
Correct.
Good thinking.
Sure.
Anyone else? With that then, we'll move on to committee reports. Sure. Go on.
From the education committee, the only thing that I have to, for tonight, is a recommendation for approval of the social studies curriculum. I believe they have created the elementary and middle school K1 through grade eight, and that's on page nine of the agenda. It's recommended.
Thank you.
The policy committee did meet, and as you can see, we have plenty of policies to refer to later on this evening.
So, we'll hold that report then until that time. Thank you. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move on then to recommend it for board action. The first section is personnel. That begins on page four, and I believe it carries over to page eight. There will be no public discussion by law. However, let me first get a motion to enter into, to enter into this, and then I need to read a few things in. Okay, so may I have a motion, please, for personnel? Mrs. Brooks, second. And that's Mrs. Cherico. There will be no public discussion by law. However, let me first get a motion to enter into, to enter into this, and then I need to read a few things in. Okay, so may I have a motion, please, for personnel? Mrs. Brooks, second. And that's Mrs. Cherico.
Two recommendations that are being read in. Recommendation number 10. Approve the, the superintendent of schools recommends actions on the following certificated personnel. Approve the reassignment of Lisa Lyuza, part-time special education staff assistant at seventeen and a half hours a week at the Copeland Middle School, to a leave replacement assignment for Susan Van Gelder, a full-time math teacher at the Copeland Middle School, effective October 1st, 2018 through December 21st, 2018. The rate of pay will be $150 per diem pending background check by Blog A3381. And item number 11. Superintendent of school recommends actions on the following certificated personnel. Approve the resignation of Christopher Graber, director of technology for the district, effective November 19, 2018.
So, the board vote will include numbers 10 and 11, as we're just read into the minutes. When you're ready, may I have a roll call, please? Nancy, do you have a comment? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Halborg?
Yes.
Ms. Maluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezic?
Yes.
Ms. Salty?
Yes. Moving on to HIV determination. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Halborg and Mrs. Brooks. I'm getting better at this. And Mrs. Brooks, okay? Dr. Malakla, if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Make sure to comment before we move on.
Yes, we have just three HIVs, and the agenda may not reflect the latest changes. There's only three HIVs that are under consideration at this time, and they are in the investigation stage. And that is, and number one is... Just give me one second here, make sure that I'm being accurate when I say it. Number one is confirmed. Number two and three are alleged.
Okay, so we're going to then have a motion to affirm HIV case number one is confirmed. Sorry, I don't know what's, 2018-1 as confirmed, 2018-2 and 2018-3 as alleged.
Correct.
And I believe you already had a motion. Correct?
We're not voting on this.
No, not voting. It's just under investigation.
So, number one's not confirmed?
One is confirmed, but it's still under investigation. I'm just giving you the preliminary finding.
Okay, so I stand corrected. We can move on. No reason to vote. Section C, going on to education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico, Mrs. Brooks. Board discussion.
Question, we have a one and then a three. So, should we want a two?
Yes.
So, we'll make that, we'll do the vote with that pending, not pending, but without change. So, it's two items, number one and number two. The curriculum, the education committee recommend, recommended if the social studies curriculum will be approved. Before the board votes, I can open up to the public if anybody wishes to comment on education. If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Halborg?
Yes.
Ms. Maluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezic?
Yes.
Ms. Salty?
Yes. Moving on to special education, beginning on page nine, ending on page 10. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Maluzak? Board discussion. One item. I can open up to the public? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Halborg?
Yes.
Ms. Maluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezic?
Yes.
Ms. Salty?
Yes. Moving on to administration, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Board discussion.
I just have a question for number two, and I don't know if you're able to answer this, but I'm curious to know what grades the students are and what cost that, I guess it's state-approved for school choice, of how much it costs for administrative for school choice.
Yeah, that's usually at the state-approved rate if it's a, if it's a public school choice program. I can find out what the rates would be. I don't have that with me, though. I apologize.
And then also, if you're able to provide information regarding the grade. I know in the past, we have had kindergarten students through the school choice, but again, I'm very confused with kindergarten or other.
I'll find that out when you're recording that.
Any other questions? If not, I can open up to the public if anybody wishes to address administration. Not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Halborg?
Yes.
Ms. Maluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezic?
Yes.
Ms. Salty?
Yes. Moving on to finance, beginning on page 12, ending on, sorted at page 12, over to 13. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Board discussion. If not, I can open up to the public if anybody wishes to address the board on finance. If not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Halborg?
Yes.
Ms. Maluzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pezic?
Yes.
Ms. Salty?
Yes. Moving on to policy, even though it only is on one page, it will be lengthy. So, do I have a motion, please? Mrs. Pezic?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks, don't take that personally. We love you. It's just policy takes a long time. So, go ahead. Mrs. Cherico, as chairperson. Okay, we're going to keep it a little bit simpler. As you can see, it's a little bit different of the format, and the board also received a different format this time, where you're seeing changes either bolded or striked out on a word that's changing. Couple of the policies, you'll see there was no changes. We're also, as Dr. Malakla is going through, our policy is as part of his merit goals in 3000, 4000, and 5000 series. We may be readopting some with no changes at all, but we are being looked at and just discussed to kind of update the dates. Just talking to you, I might inform, or some people can hear. Move your board, they're going. The sick lead one, the first policy, there was no changes. We're just showing that because the reg is being revised. So, the policy was also looked at as no changes. The next one, the administering, I'll be at the end of that, that's been looked at for several meetings in policy committee, and having gone through the school nurse, the lawyer, legal, we are ready to implement that. The news media relations, one change, like this DYSF has changed to DCP and P. The next one, the electronics surveillance in school buildings and on grounds, just the last sentence was added on that, bolded. One big change was the HIV harassment intimidation in Bolian. That came out in the July 2018 alert to revise. You can see the policy went from a couple pages to now a 27-page policy, and because of that, the reg is being eliminated, and you can see that that's a motion once this new policy is implemented, that reg that contains a lot of that information, and that was mandated, that change. So, we have to go with the new policy, even though most of our policies are not 27-page full. Student suicide prevention, just a couple changes. This physical restraint, also you can see the changes on that. One other policy that we talked about before in the past was student-teachers interns policy 9541. Little bit changed with the videographic. That's recommendation of this administration is to allow that for our student-teachers interns. You'll see the change on that. Past administrations did not want to have it in the district, but it was caused by the policy committee asking us to revise that in the district. The entrance age, there was no changes, just being readopted, same thing with the children who placed by domestic violence. Students smoking, and then also the students, the school district providing technology devices, obviously being implemented because of the new Chromebooks and one-on-one. There will be a reg for that, and that policy also talks about the gambling law. So, just kind of a basic overview, but it's nice to be able for everyone to now see the changes that were there when the voting and striking. Which then will be online going forward from tonight. Right.
And these, and these are online tonight. The one, see the other on paper, they're also online.
And these, and these are online tonight, they've one seat and other on paper, they're also online.
And these are the first read. They'll be on the agenda again at the next meeting, giving the public and as well as board members more time to sit through it and make any comments and recommendations for changes it may be before we vote on it for a second time. Once it's voted upon, second time, it then becomes effective as of that date. I, the one, administering the opioid antidote, the board had been working, the Policy Committee had been working on that for a few months. The suggestion originally was by the, by the company that helps us develop policies that anybody trained, trained could certainly administer the antidote. The board had a problem with that, the Policy Committee had a problem with that because we felt it should be a health professional and not just anybody that administers the antidote. And interestingly enough, we then got advisory from the company, and the recommendation from the company was it should be a health professional. So we were right where we should have been, and I'm glad we didn't approve it back when because we did have concerns it shouldn't be just anybody administering that. And then as Nancy did explain, the HIV policy is very long. It's because the regulation is now intertwined into that policy. So that's why the regulation is being eliminated because it's in the policy. Regulations are the procedures that go with all these policies. So with that, any other board discussion, questions for the Policy Committee?
I do have one question, and I think it's for Dr. Mabala. Regarding the electronic surveillance on page one, and it is like the third paragraph, regarding parents who request surveillance, if it is directly related to discipline procedure, will there be a regulation for that? And if the parent does have a request, will there be a form or anything like that? Have we never seen this before?
Yes, so this has been vetted in a number of districts, and if a parent does make a request relative to a, an incident, particularly if there's discipline involved for their child, they will be permitted to view the footage. Certainly, in our procedures, we will specify that that footage will be viewed in the company of a supervising staff member.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can, I can open up to the public if anybody has a comment question about anything related to policy. If not, for the first read and the abolishing of Regulation five-five-point-two, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Helford?
Yes.
Ms. Malusek?
Yes.
Ms. Vessick?
Yes.
Ms. Solomon?
Yes.
Moving on to old business. Do we have any old business for the board?
I do, just clarification regarding the auditors and when they will be here to give their report.
Yes, the auditors have completed the audit. I think the board will be very happy with the results of the audit, that's all I'll say, I don't want to steal their thunder. But they will be here on October the tenth. They will deliver the report, there's some, you'll hear some information from the auditor in regard to the fact that there's some new specifications by the state, a new mandate of something the audit must include that regards retiree health benefits. It will not change the results of the audit. However, the information that the auditors need has not been forthcoming yet from the state. So the state basically can enforce its own deadline, sometimes this happens. For that reason, we'll have a presentation of the audit, but the board will not be asked to approve the audit that evening. It will come at a date and time that the auditors have been able to insert the information. There'll be no compliance issues, and the substance of the audit will not change in any way.
Thank you. Any other old business?
I have some old, old business.
Okay.
So around this time last year, we had members of the public, and parents, and staff members. Now that school is open, people are passing our school buses. Kids are getting on and walk to school buses, and people don't care about the red lights, and they're still going past them. So there were, there was a presenter, from what I understand, that presented to the Transportation Department that spoke about a company that can help us eliminate or find a solution to this problem at little to no cost. This is kind of their hand information. I was wondering if we could go back and possibly look into it. Because again, Mrs. Brooks is the crazy lady who doesn't jump out in front of the street, kneel at the car, besides still pass the school bus with the red flashing lights. Because it can be dangerous. I know there's been problems on Fleetwood, things like that. I live all the way down Green Pond in a small league community, and people, there's not enough space to get too far through, but they manage to sit around the school buses. So I'm just wondering, again, I know they came and presented to Transportation, maybe Joe, I know Mr. McGovern was present.
I'll check with both of them.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other old business? New business?
I have, this could go under older news, but I know as a parent, I receive the park scores for my kids, and I just wanted to know what the plans were for Administration to provide any kind of data from the park.
We are scheduled to meet with our administrative team Friday morning, and we have a structured activity plan, scapula, if you would, with some guided questions to help bring them through an analysis of both our current year park scores as well as a three-year longitudinal analysis. And then I'll be presenting to the board, I believe, at the next board meeting, our, yeah, October sixth, our overall district results.
Any other new business?
I thought, I'm sorry. That's all right. At some point in time, and it might have been part of the communication update, we talked about board meetings, or PTA meetings, and representation from board members. And we really never had a full conversation about PTA meetings, and I just wanted to bring it up, whether or not board members are still going to attend PTA meetings. Some of the things that we discussed were the fact that we are communicating in various ways, and previously, we didn't have all the outlets for PTAs to be updated. I know for myself, after the conversation, I did not attend the PTA that I typically would represent. So, and I apologize if I missed the gun on that, certainly wasn't my intention, but I just wanted to bring that, so we could have a discussion and whether or not board members will continue to attend.
One of the things that the board asked me to do after our last meeting was when I met with the PTA council, was to ask them, and we did talk about the fact that there are increased outlets, there's obviously the live streaming for people as an alternative to receiving a report. I do have to share that the PTA council overwhelmingly values the presence of board members at their meetings, and named almost everyone here specifically, and saying that they would not want them not to come anymore. It's one of their highlights.
I just want to.
While they said they, they love all the new info, they valued that. So that was the, that was very, very strong feedback.
Thank you very much.
So with that, then, with that, I was going to ask for a follow-up. Rose was covering, Nancy, which school, your bird's wing?
I'm Bird's Wing, correct? Lisa? Your Dwyer?
P D M.
P D M. P D L, I was telling you, Copeland.
So do we have them all covered? We do, that works.
I think it was just, I don't know, it's not, it's a town council.
Yes, right.
My wife is a supervisor.
Okay, so I will then, at the next meeting, we need shared services and town council. Okay, thank you, I will get on that. I know that I then, I took Rose's position on the Education Committee, so I'm going to be taking care of that. Take care of this. It's really only one month, really. Yep. Any other new business? Not, I can open it up to the public if anyone wishes to address the board on anything. Thank you. Well, then I will open it up, and the board does have to go back into executive session. It will not be a good time against the personnel. We thank you so much, and have a good few weeks, and we'll see you back in two weeks.